There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh? McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Motion approved.
The record reflect that council went into executive session with respect to item 6A pursuant to South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70A subsection 2 and 5, and we received legal advice regarding that item, and no action was taken. Next item on the agenda is item 7, citizens' input. This is for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have one individual that signed up to speak. Edith Taylor. Edith Taylor? Is that you standing, ma'am? Okay, if you would come down to the mic, you would need to state your first and last name, as well as your address, and you'll be given two minutes to speak. You will hear a timer that'll notify you when the two minutes has ended. And then, just to be clear, ma'am, you signed up for 7A, items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing, and so I wanted to make sure your item is not related to anything that a public hearing has already been held for or will be held for.
I don't think so.
Okay, you just listed property. All right, if you would.
Edith Taylor, Hopkins, 1099 Motley Road in Hopkins. I am here with a concern, what I consider an ongoing concern. I have an issue that's going on with the Richland County Embusment Office concerning property that my family and I own on Pen Cushion Road near Westinghouse. Since 2019, I've contacted the Embusment Office seeking information from them pertaining to information I received from a utility company informing me of utility lines they placed on the property. Embusment responded. My request was forwarded to Richland County Department for review. On another occasion, I contacted the Embusment Office with the same concern. The response was, "Richland County Register of Deed Office indicated they do not have documents regarding your request." One instance, I mailed out my property taxes on that particular property, and later received the notice from the tax office saying that the property was up for sale for failure to pay the taxes. When I inquired about the matter, I was told that the pavement was accidentally applied to some property in Blythewood. I now take my payments in. In May of this year, I forward information from Richland County GIS Office and have yet to receive response from the Embusment Office. I don't understand why. I'm still at point A, trying to get information concerning my property from the Embusment Office. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that signed up to speak this evening.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Next item on the agenda is item 8, citizens' input must pertain to Richland County matters not on the agenda. Items for which a public hearing is required or a public hearing has been scheduled cannot be addressed at this time. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have three individuals that have signed up to speak this evening, and, let's see, we have Terry Rowl. Terry Rowl, if you would come forward. Kim Murphy, if you would come forward at the other mic. If you would, state your first and last name, as well as your address, and you'll be given two minutes to speak.
My name is Terry Rowl. I'm at 3635 Kennedy Road, Irma, South Carolina. I hope I'm at the right place and doing the right thing, and that lady told me right there that this is where I would sign up to speak about this. I'm talking about these little yellow and white signs y'all put up, and at the bottom of them, it says penalty for removal of sign. People are taking this very seriously. Nobody is removing these signs. They're getting put up, whether it's zoned or rezoned or not rezoned, it's never taken down. And I turned the corner today going home, and there was one laying out in the field, and I didn't get out to look, but I'm pretty sure it was one that was put up in 2018. And I know the signs that were put up on this property in 2018 stayed there for forever. I think maybe the people that cut the road got a couple of them. I think one of the guy that plows the field, I think he knocked another one down, but they just get knocked down, they never get removed. I would like to see something changed, so if they get put up, they get taken down because it is litter and it looks nasty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim Murphy, 154 Old Laurel Lane in Chapin. At the last meeting, I raised a concern about the bid for the dirt road package O, I believe, and it wasn't about the bid, it was about one of the four roads that was part of that bid. Howard Coogler Road, very small dirt road, was proposed to be paved with penny tax dollars, and it appeared that the road paving would assist the developer with developing versus the developer paying to pave the road themselves. There is a track of land that is zoned PDD. I did check with Geo Price today before the meeting, and he said that, I don't know if it's updated yet, but that was a mistake, that that track should not have been labeled PDD on the GIS map. And he said it's now changed, it's now been changed back to rural. But that may kind of raise another issue, that there are potentially other tracks of land that may be mislabeled, but in that case, it would, I think, be disturbing if county tax dollars, penny tax dollars, were used to pave a road to help a developer. But just, again, thank you for what you do, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Jeff Dustin?
Hi. Is this on? Jeff Dustin, 233 Richland Farms Road, Hopkins. Good evening. Does my two minutes start now? All right. I am a Navy veteran who bravely served in Columbia, the country, not so to city, in case you were confused, and am a combat veteran because of that service in the drug war. Now I'm a bit of a broken old man, basically. Full of spare tire, don't look anything like I did when I was a sailor. When I used to live on that Navy ship, I used to have a dream I would come to South Carolina someday. Always wanted to move here and just get a little patch of ground, and maybe in Hopkins or somewhere out there, maybe Blythewood, and what I would do is raise some rare breed chickens, okay? Now, that dream died when these new zoning laws came out, the rezoning, to be specific. I live in what is once, was once called rural Richland County, okay? I don't think it's going to be rural much longer because of big developers with names that rhyme with "mungo," okay? My small farm dreams are completely been bungoed. Two years ago, the proposed rezoning came out, and I put together a petition to ask my fellow voters what they thought of this. We went to change.org, and we had 409 signatories, including myself, that'd be 410 voters. I have a copy of that petition with me today. On the petition is a picture of Pinocchio, and the reason we put Pinocchio on there is because we felt we were being lied to about the pro-bungo development and the rules around that development. He has a long nose because he's lying about rezoning and the impact on our farms and single-family homes. That picture represented how we felt two years ago, and we've come a long way since then, all right? But we, at that time, we felt responsible development didn't fit in with bungo.
Mr. Dustin, that is your time, sir.
Thank you very much, you have a good day.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that signed up to speak this evening.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Next item on the agenda is item 9, report of the county administrator. Mr. Brown, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. In your packet on page 19, I want to give you a reminder that in January of 2024, we have scheduled our annual ethics training. That training will be available to all Richland County employees, whether they are elected or appointed. The training will offer an in-depth explanation of the Ethics Act as it applies to all public employees and public officials, so we want to give everybody enough time just to prepare for that. Their training will take place here in council chambers, and it will be roughly about an hour, so just ask everybody to remember that and encourage all of our employees to participate as available. The next thing, Mr. Chair, I have three individuals, I just want to spend just a few moments of your time tonight and recognize some of the efforts of the men and women that you have working here at Richland County, and actually, three of these individuals are at the director level. And so, I want to start with in order of the dates. So you look at the bottom of page 20, I want to recognize Ms. Jennifer Ladishkin, she is our Director of Procurement. On September 14, 2023, Ms. Ladishkin was nationally recognized by Unit Solutions for her leadership in public procurement, and the award that she received acknowledged that her efforts in her field of work and just acknowledged the work that she's done as a leading person in procurement, in public procurement. And I just think, again, from time to time, we are not always aware of the gems that we have here in Richland County, so I just want to take just a moment to highlight Ms. Jennifer Ladishkin, Mr. Chair, members of council, so thank you for that opportunity, and thank you to Ms. Ladishkin for the work that you do on behalf of Richland County in serving in procurement. Mr. Chair, members of council, another individual we have that actually serves as one of our directors is Mr. Bill Davis. He's a very quiet individual.
For introduction, Mr. Brown.
He serves as a Director of Richland County Utilities, and on September 20 of 2023, he became the Speaker-elect of the House of Delegates for the Water, Environment Federation, or WEF. It is a not-for-profit technical and educational organization of more than 30,000 individual members and 75 affiliated member associations, representing water quality professionals around the world. And again, just want to acknowledge that we have individuals serving in our community that are recognized and that hold national positions and do us proud, so I want to take a few moments and recognize Mr. Bill Davis. Thank you. And then on October 24th, Mr. Chair, members of council, our Director of the Detention Center received a national accreditation from the American Jail Association. Director Harvey completed the jail manager certification program and became a certified jail manager. This certification is granted upon completion of a rigid experiential background application and intensive four-hour examination jointly prepared by the American Jail Association and the Jail Manager Certification Commission, Certification Commission. Receiving this certification demonstrates competency and professionalism in the field and indicates a strong level of knowledge and a speciality and recognizes continued education and growth. And so, again, just wanted to recognize another one of our individuals who've attained a certification of a national level that represents a very small portion of the people who do that work, so wanted to recognize Mr. Harvey for that work. And, Mr. Chair, I want to end on that celebration of our professionals. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item 10, report of the clerk of council. Madam Clerk?
I don't have any report at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda is item 11, report of the chair. At this time, the chair doesn't have any reports, updates, or announcements for the body. Next item on the agenda is item 12, approval of consent items. Ms. Newton?
Mr. Chair?
Recognized.
I move to approve items 12A and 12B. Second?
Properly second, no discussions necessary. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 13, third reading items. 13A, in ordinance to adopt the Text Amendment recommendations of the Richland County Planning Commission to the 2021 Land Development Code, which will regulate the development in the unincorporated areas of Richland County. At this time, I entertain a motion. Move to approve?
Second.
Properly second, discussion. Recognize, Mr. Livingston?
You know, I briefly mentioned on second reading that I did have some concerns that I voted for second reading because I do support the plan, and my concerns is I want to just try to get us to think about some considerations as we move forward. You know, I see some significant advantages, particularly to current homeowners, and I think that's, and I think it's very important. I did not support early on, you know, advocating for infield in neighborhoods with duplexes and triplexes in current established neighborhoods. But my big concern as we move forward is I think we have to really take a look at how we prepare for new residents and new growth in our community. You know, with Scott and a number of new developments coming, the need for housing, I think we're going to have to take a look at some of that. When we started our redevelopment, you know, land development plan, remember a lot of what's going on now was not happening at that given time, so I'm encouraging my colleagues to make sure we clearly look at whether or not down the road, we need to adjust and make some changes that relate to particularly issues like lot sizes and so forth, as we try to improve and deal with the growth that we have in our county, and making sure that we have infrastructure for it, making sure that we create opportunities for affordability in terms of housing. Just some of those things I think we did not consider because we weren't where we are today in the plan, so in the future, don't be surprised if I suggest some things, that we try to amend the plan or do some other things, but I think that's as we change, so I just think we ought to be open to, you know, looking at things as we progress and not just assume that this is going to be it for all and everything we need for our county. I just thought that was important, but I do want to commend the Planning Commission and staff for all the work, but keep in mind, we got to look out for what may happen in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and so I've been on both sides of the fence here with the Land Development Code, and I'm excited to be able to support it tonight, but I do think that some of what Mr. Livingston is stating is that this is just an end to a beginning. There are still some things that we need to continue to look, to look at, even as we go forward. I was in a community meeting last night, talking to some of the residents and who are going to be impacted by the changes in the LDC, and just making sure that the citizens know, you know, what the next steps are if their properties are impacted by this, you know, to really, I've said this over probably for every item, is to make sure that there is a heavy media presence so that the citizens understand, okay, this is, this is what we did last night, this is the next steps, and I will commend, you know, I'll commend the communications team for really putting it out there at the same meeting last night. Some of the, some of the citizens were saying, you know, I did exactly what you said, I followed on social media, I'm getting the updates and the notices, so that's helpful, but this is just the beginning of some things that we really need to take a look at to make sure that we have exactly what it is that we need for Richland County today. Thank you.
Weaver, and then Ms. Newton.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm going to be voting no tonight, my vote has been consistently no, so I'm not changing that. I know the votes are up here to move it forward, that's fine, a lot of, a lot of work's been spent on this. My only concern is, and I value what Mr. Livingston said, because I think we may be making sprawl worse in some cases and making it better. If we reduce density, we're going to be talking about, you know, forcing some workers to live in Fairfield, Kershaw County, we're doing a good job bringing industries in, but we're just not going to have affordable housing for them, so I have a lot of concerns about it. I would like to revisit the issue tonight, I know it's going to, not tonight, but in the future, I know it's going to pass tonight, but, you know, I will have some more questions going forward. Thank you, Ms. Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, since you made eye contact. So first, I want to, I want to thank the, the staff for all of the work that they've done on this, and also, I'd like to thank the citizens. There are some people that I've gotten to know very well during this process, and it has been a journey, and so I want to thank everybody who has been with this process, many of you for years attending the meetings, reading the documents, because this affects our community, so I want to thank you, and also just ask that everyone will continue to be involved, because as, as Ms. Barron said about it being the end of the beginning, one of the things that comes next is updating the comprehensive plan, which is really key to protecting the kind of communities that we want. It goes hand in hand with the Land Development Code, and I know that there have been a lot of questions about this process, and I'll echo Councilwoman Barron's sentiments, that I think there's a lot more education to do, because as I've looked at the emails that I've received, some of the concerns that people have aren't really concerns that are addressed by the Land Development Code, they're addressed by the permitting process, or they're addressed by the comprehensive plan, so really just want to thank the citizens, we have heard you, and to, to ask really that you do stay involved with the comprehensive plan, and, and to Mr. Brown, to the staff who has really done a good job increasing communications about this, that we need to increase it even more, so just a big thank you to everybody, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to speak.
There should be no discussion. Recognize, Ms.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could just get clarification from staff that if this is approved tonight on third reading, kind of when does it go in effect and just process?
Recognize, Mr. Brown.
Yes, it's my understanding that the plan is that it would go into effect on March 1st, the same date that the new maps would go into effect, so that the new code in full with these amendments would go into effect on March 1st, sorry.
And, Mr. Chair, the, how we previously discussed about the folks that can apply for the different rural rezonings, does that begin to meet?
Well, for the new ones, that can be done, if it's approved tonight, they can do the applications for the new zonings, but it wouldn't happen until it took, takes effect. So they can do the applications, but nothing would happen with those applications until March 1st?
Right, I know a word that gives a lot of people heartburn and angst is moratorium. So would there be any sort of moratorium, assuming that the vote tonight is in the affirmative? Would there be any sort of moratorium between tonight and that March 1st date with respect to, I guess, new applications?
No, they would be able to make applications, but the new code doesn't take effect until March 1st, so once March 1st gets here, then the new process, so the new code would be in effect, but they can do the applications, and even if, even under the old application, I think at this point, it would probably be around the same time that they would come up anyway, because it's already near the, you know, the middle of November.
There should be no discussion on this item. There be, uh, Ms. McBride?
Sure.
Chair, follow up to your question. So, in the whole process, there's no grandfather in hand, so if they, if they make an application now and it's approved, and then March 1st, it's under another zoning code, what happens?
March 1st, the new code is in effect, so whatever the equivalent is for the old code, it will become whatever the new equivalent is.
So that means that that will be a change automatically?
Right, that's because it's a new, under a new code. The old code and the interim procedures won't be in, won't exist anymore, right?
There should be no. All right, there being none, Madam Clerk, it's time for?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item?
Mr. Chair?
You recognize, Mr. Brenham?
Would you mind a moment of personal privilege?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're recognized, absolutely. I'd be more than willing to oblige.
As many of you know, I've been heavily involved in this process, so happy for today's outcome. I want to thank the 2022 version of county council that sent it back to the Planning Commission for some further consideration. Want to thank the Planning Commission for the hard yards that they put in in drafting these recommendations and incorporating a lot of the public feedback that was received. I see in the audience the current chair, Chris Yonkey, former vice chair, Gary Dennis, thank you all for being here. Anybody else from the Planning Commission here? Okay, and thank you to all of the Planning Commission. Thank you to the public for the engagement, for the feedback, you guys were definitely the wind in the sails of this movement, movement. We definitely need quality growth and development, developers are not the enemy of our community. We need them, they're an important part of the community and of our economy as well. All of the tools that anyone needs for any kind of project is available in this new version of the Land Development Code. They're, they're a little more specific, so whatever a developer or an applicant who's looking for rezoning requests, they're going to need to ask for that specific thing, and that's going to lead to greater transparency in processes and the rezoning process, and it's going to lead to more predictable outcomes and the type of development that happens, and I think that's a victory for everybody involved in government. Thank you to the staff, ACA Jensen, Geo Price, and others who have been so helpful throughout, and, yeah, I would call it a labor of love, but that would be a lie. It was definitely labor, though. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Labor of labor, right. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chair, members of the council, items 12A, B, and 13A, we request reconsideration.
And a motion?
So moved. Second?
We move to properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Teresa?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Next item on the agenda is item 13B, case number 23-039MA. Name of the applicant is Alonzo Haynes Jr. This is a request to change the zoning designation from rural to office and institute district. Location, 1849 Willoughby Street, TMS number R19707-01-06. Entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
We move to properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Entertain a motion for reconsideration with respect to item 13B. Let's say a second.
Second.
So move to properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston? Teresa?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron? Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Next item on the agenda is item 14A, first reading items. Finding that the Richland Lexington Riverbanks Parks District may issue not exceeding $80 million in principal amount, general obligation bonds to authorize the Richland Lexington Riverbanks Parks District to issue such bonds and to provide for the publication of notice of the said finding and authorization. I entertain a motion. Riverbanks Parks District to issue such bonds and to provide for the publication of notice of the said finding and authorization. Entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Been moved to properly second. Any discussion?
You recognize, Ms. Barron? Thank you. And so I just want to, to go on record to say that I believe that this project is one of which goes hand in hand with a lot of things that this council has already, has already approved in the past, such as Scout Motors. We are in somewhat of an economic development thrust right now, and as we prepare for new citizens to come to Richland County, as we prepare for those of us, those of us who already live here and enjoy Richland County specifically to the zoo, I, I would like to say that as we move forward to have conversation about this particular bond item, that we be creative in our approach, because the zoo is something that I believe, and I said to the staff of the zoo before, that this is something that the citizens of Richland County, we invest in, but we oftentimes don't know what our, what our return is on our investment. And so I would like for us to have further conversations on making sure that the return is there for the citizens of Richland County as we are investing into this project through our tax funds, then there should be something, some type of return that we will receive as of that. Yes, I believe that there is going to be great things, and I'm excited about it. My children and I spend a lot of time there at the zoo. But at the same time, we want to make sure, and I'll say it one, one last time, that the investment that we put forth in Richland County and specifically to the zoo, that there is a great return on it.
Thank you, Ms. Barron. Ms. Newton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and thank you to my colleagues. I just want to say, as we consider this item, a few things about the zoo. The zoo is the number one tourism attraction that we have in the entire state of South Carolina, and we're really lucky to have a world-class zoo. I know when I went to Disney World with my family, I didn't go to Animal Kingdom, because I was like, well, it's not going to be better than Riverbanks, so I'll just, I'll just go to the other parks. And so, but I also want our, our citizens to know that this isn't something that we take lightly. This came before the body before, and we said no at that time, because we take it really seriously. When we do anything, that increases the burden on taxpayers. So apart from the fact that the zoo is the number one tourism attraction, and I would just add a few things. Number one is that we do have data that show that for every $1 invested in the zoo, there is a multiplied impact in terms of people who are visiting our area, eating in our areas, traveling to our areas, and so that's something that we need to show to the public. And then additionally, one thing that I don't know if everyone's aware of, because I know that I wasn't, because of the type of governmental entity that the zoo is, the options that they have to raise funds are through a bond. I'm sure that if the zoo could skip this and just go out to the market and get a loan like we might do if we wanted to expand our house, I know that they would. But unless the South Carolina legislature changes something, that's not an option. So again, it's a jewel that we have, and I'm happy to support the zoo tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Question? I saw Mr. Livingston's hand, Ms. McBride, and then Ms. Mackey.
And I'll be very brief, because as Newton mentioned, some of the things I want to mention, and oftentimes my colleagues will hear me say when we're talking about finances, I'll make the point how important it is for us to understand the difference, difference between an investment and a cost. And I think this is clearly an investment on behalf of Richland County Council and, and citizens of Richland County. You know, as, as you mentioned, when you're talking about the largest attraction in your county, not only that, when I, when I think about how the zoo operates in terms of financing, you know, the governmental entities provide only about 12% for the zoo operations, you know, other generated through, through fees, 7, 8%, other 10% from society donations. So how, how could you disagree with an investment of that nature when you're talking about, you know, the zoo only asking us for 12%? I think, I think that's, that's tremendous. I think, and oftentimes the conversation sounds, you know, it goes like, well, county council is doing something for the zoo. No, the zoo is doing something for us. And I think that's important for us to remember, as, as we take, take this issue rather seriously. And, and when I think about, you know, the new jobs, shopping, the economic benefit of it, the, you know, quality of life benefits to this county, it's just so tremendous. And then when I look at what we're talking about in terms of the cost of the bond, you know, we're talking about on a, an average home in Richland County, we're talking about, you know, it's only about 35 cents a month, I mean, a week, 35 cents a week, that's what it costs. So just imagine, you know, what we're getting for 35 cents a week on additional cost to the zoo, on an average home in Richland County. And also a cost that would be, would also be automobiles, but that would be minimum. So what we're talking about in terms of investment is, is, in my opinion, it's just simply for me, as a county council member, for that increase, it's just simple, absolutely, just a no-brainer for the benefits.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. McBride, and then Ms. Mackey.
I don't think there's much left for me to say after everybody has spoken. But I do want to say that we have a vision in Richland County, and, and we have a vision to be a world-class county. And in order to achieve that vision, then we need initiatives like the zoo. This is the place the zoo brings all of our tourism from all over the United States. And to expand the zoo, that's expanding our efforts to become a world-class county. So I thank you, I thank the zoo for bringing this before us, and I think the citizens would definitely not only appreciate it, but benefit from it. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McBride, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Like several of my colleagues, I definitely love the zoo. I have two young children and appreciate all the zoo, our community. You know, highlighting one of the facts that Ms. Newton brought up is that the zoo is a statewide attraction, that is true. It is a jewel of our entire state. However, only Richland Lexington County residents are responsible for paying for the debt of this bond, not the entire state. And so because of that, I always want to make sure that I am making a conscious effort to think about the impact this is going to have on Richland County residents. So as much as I do support the zoo, I would like us to consider, as Ms. Barron said, additional conversations and to talk about other ways that we can move forward and different things we can do with this bond and benefiting our residents, looking at different prices for admissions perhaps, looking at ways that we can make sure that all residents, you know, no matter your income level, are able to visit the zoo and have access to the zoo. And then also, looking at the long-term benefits to our residents and making sure they fully understand the impact on their tax bill and what that means, but that they can also access the zoo at an affordable way, a rate compared to paying the same price that maybe tons of visitors pay, especially since they're already covering in their tax bill. So I look forward to continued conversations with the zoo staff to hopefully work out some of those things where we see Lexington and Richland County residents benefit and be able to attend the zoo.
Any additional discussion?
Well, let me just say that I am a huge proponent of the zoo, and I'm probably a bigger Tommy Stringfellow fan, or maybe the biggest Tommy Stringfellow fan on council. But I will be voting no on this item tonight. And, and my reasons for voting no, twofold. Number one, I think it's an inopportune time, and I've expressed that to my friends over, you know, at the zoo, as well as some other stakeholders. And number two, I think that we need to look at another mechanism, you know, for financing, you know, this request. You know, last week, council had voted to use, or utilize, rather, unused debt millage to finance, you know, capital projects, which was a necessity here in the county. But at the same time, you know, in passing that ordinance, you know, to utilize that, that unused debt millage, you saw, we simultaneously passed on an opportunity to reduce the tax obligation on Richland residents. And here we are a week later, and we're now being asked to consider increasing the tax obligation on residents with respect to the zoo's bond requests. And when I think about taxes, I'm not an anti-tax guy, but if I'm going to increase the tax obligation on residents, it has to be a last resort for me, and it has to be an absolute necessity. And while I support the zoo's plans, I don't, the expansion plans, I don't view it as a necessity to where I would go as far as to raise property taxes on residents. When we talk about the timing of this, you know, we just passed a resolution a couple months ago to put a penny on the ballot in 2024. And my concern with this request is I believe it could frustrate, if not completely stymie, our efforts to get a penny passed, which, which would fund transportation in Richland County along with other, you know, road and transit needs that we have. And I can't go to my constituents and tell them I passed on an opportunity to reduce the tax obligation for you, and then decided to increase the tax obligation. At the same time, I'm going to ask you to pass a penny next year or keep a penny on the books that is slated to come off in 2026. I think that there's another way to do this, but the mechanism that I would support doesn't coincide with the timeline that our friends have at the zoo, which I understand. I would be, I am a huge proponent of using a capital sales tax to pay for this. This is being touted as big for tourism. Well, I take the position, let the tourists help pay for it. Don't place this solely on the backs of Richland County residents, at least with the sales tax. Not only could we fund this, but you would have visitors into the county who are helping to fray the cost, you know, of this, of this item. And so I support it. I like the idea, I like the concept, but I think it's an inopportune time, and I also believe that there's another way to pay for this without having to resort to increasing the tax obligation on residents. And I would also tell my colleagues on council to keep in mind that your budget season is coming up. And so if we say yes to this, well, our other village agencies, you know, the school districts, Columbia Area Mental Health, the library and the like, well, they're going to be asking as well, you know, for an increase in the village, more likely than not, to meet their needs. And so again, I am a no on this item tonight, doesn't mean that I don't support the zoo. I just think it's an inopportune time, and I believe that there's a better way to pay for it. Any additional discussion?
I thought I was through, but after your comments, huh?
Well, my comments really weren't for the body, it was for, you know, me speaking to the public, but you're certainly recognized, and then after you, Ms. Mackey.
Let me say, my time on this council, I cannot think of a single major initiative that we've engaged in where there was not, there was, there was not an argument in saying it's not the right time. I can remember when we did the student housing, which tremendously impacted our community. There was an argument about it wasn't the right time. We did the convention center, it wasn't the right time. We did downtown TIF to develop downtown in the vicinity, it wasn't the right time. Now, it's the right time, because the zoo is asking for it, and, and they're prepared to, to do what they need to do and have a great plan to make it happen. So, so my argument is, you know, no time is the right time, a lot of times, for, for individuals. Also, too, to talk about the cost, how it may affect something else. If we're in Big 12 in Richland County, if you're going to increase, you know, the cost of taxes on an average home in our community, 35 cents a week, and if that's going to stop us from supporting the, you know, the initiative, penalty tax, so forth, we're in deep trouble, deep, deep trouble. So I don't see that, that as having nearly that impact. But keep in mind, too, now, the benefit is going to be, as I talked about, remember my important statement is, I'm, I'm always talking about cost, investment versus cost. The cost could be, I mean, the investment could be significantly higher than the 35% per week or whatever taxes you might put on an automobile, and that's why I said earlier, for me, for the benefit of our county, it is simply a no-brainer, and I certainly hope my colleagues move forward on it.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. Ms. Mackey, you recognize?
Thank you. You know, I respect all of my colleagues' opinions. I did just want to make one clarifying point, Chair Walker, in your, your statement. We, as a body, did not approve a resolution to have a penny on the ballot in 2024. We approved a resolution to look at transportation projects, and then that will be brought back to us, but we have not approved a resolution that would put the penny on the ballot in 2024. So I want to make sure that is very clear, because that did not happen.
Thank you for the correction, Madam. Additional comments? You recognize, Mr. Brenham?
Sorry, I wasn't available earlier, stepped away. I'm, I'll, I'll probably vote yes today, because I want the conversation to continue, but I'm definitely not a no in the end unless some, some things change, some of the terms change. So just as the deal is currently presented, in the end, I'd probably be a no unless we can work out some other arrangements that could go hand in hand with this, and so I just want to explain my yes vote tonight.
Um, it's, Mr.?
I might as well get in on the fun, too. I, I do support the zoo. I think the zoo is amazing, and I think the project could be great. I totally understand where my colleagues are coming from, those that, that have said that they're going to vote no this evening. I will be voting yes to move along the conversation. I agree with my colleagues, we do need to sit down, we need to talk about how this is going to benefit the three entities that are taking the tax burden to make this project go forward. I don't think that's a bad idea for us to get back to the table and have those conversations, and some of those ideals are good. I mean, if we're going to pay taxes to be able to improve the zoo, maybe we should have some time doing the zoo where all those, all those people that are contributing on the tax base side can be able to come to the zoo for free. They do it in Florida with, with Disney and other places. So just some unique things that we can look at to make this more palatable for those that are on the outside that don't understand exactly what this project looks like and how it's going to affect us in the long run. So hopefully, we can keep this conversation going, and it'll be fruitful for those moving forward. Thank you, sir.
Additional comments, discussion, or questions? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teracia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 15, report of the Economic Development Committee that would be given by the Honorable Paul Livingston. Mr. Livingston, you recognize?
Item 15A, a resolution consenting to the assignment of Camira Chemicals, incorporate Camira Water Solutions, a fee agreement by between Richland, between Camira Chemicals and Richland County, South Carolina. The committee's recommendation was for approval, and we're done here, just simply transferring the terms from one company to another, which we customarily do.
You've heard the recommendation of the committee. Any questions or discussion? All right, all right, you recognize, Mr. Acia?
Thank you. So this is just a, a name change for the company?
Well, well, the different company.
Okay, so there was...
They, they, they take over...
Okay.
Doesn't affect the county.
So the, the, the business of the company is the same, it's just a, a different, a different company is...
The business is the same.
The business is the same. Okay, thank you.
Additional questions, comments? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teracia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item 15B, a resolution approving the sponsor affiliate to John in fee agreement between
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Select a please report of the Economic Development Committee.
Mr. Livingston. Next item on the agenda is Item 16, Report of the Rules and Appointments Committee that will be given by the Honorable Gretchen Baron. Councilwoman, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a couple of items before council today, beginning with appointments. And we will be appointing first... No, I don't need your hard copy. You're not going to do this. No.
I'm sorry, that was an inside joke. They give me a hard time having a hard copy.
So we'll make the first appointment for the East Richland Public Service District One. And Rules and Appointments Committee recommends appointing Lisa Kelly Stewart.
Recommendation of the committee. Any questions or discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next appointment is for the Central Midlands Council of Governments. There is one appointment. And the Rules and Appointments Committee recommends appointing Clyde Chuck Falau III.
Recommendation of the committee. Any questions or discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Baron?
Next appointment is for the Transportation Penny Advisory Committee. There are three vacancies. The Rules and Appointments Committee recommends appointing Algeron Williams, Kamal Salon, I probably did not say that correctly, and Shirley Robinson.
Heard the recommendation of the committee. Any questions or discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Baron?
For our next appointment, that's the Richland Memorial Hospital Board. There are five vacancies. The Rules and Appointments Committee recommends appointing Frances Ash Goings and re-advertising the remaining vacancies.
Heard the recommendation of the committee. Any questions or discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Baron?
Then lastly, notification of vacancies. You can find those listed on pages 229 through 233. The dates of publication will be November the 17th to December the 15th. And for the record, I'll just read in the vacancies. Accommodations Tax Committee for vacancies. Building Code Board of Appeals, there are eight vacancies. Business Service Center Appeal Board, three vacancies. Central Midlands Regional Transit Authority, one vacancy. Transportation, I'm sorry, Hospitality Tax Committee, three vacancies. Richland Memorial Hospital Board, four vacancies. And then we have one that we need to add to this list, which is a vacancy for the Midlands Workforce Development Board, which one vacancy. And that one came about as a result of our meeting today.
Heard the recommendation of the committee. Any questions or discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Baron, does that conclude your report?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baron.
Mr. Chair, may I just make a plea to council members? We have several boards that we cannot conduct business because we don't have enough individuals. And so if you all will please help us fill these vacancies, the committee has done an excellent job in making sure that our boards have been fully, we placed everyone. However, the ones that you see before us today are the ones that are very hard to get applicants for. So if you all, those of you who are in chambers, those of you who are listening online, and those of you council members, please help us fill those vacancies because they are equally as important as all the other boards and commissions that we see. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baron. Next item on the agenda is Item 17. Other items. 17A, a resolution calling for a public hearing to be held upon the question of the issuance of not exceeding eighty million dollars of general obligation bonds of Richland Lexington Riverbanks Parks District, South Carolina, and to provide for the publication of the notice of such hearing. Entertain a motion.
Move for, Mr. Chair?
Second.
It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right. Next item on the agenda is Item 18, Executive Session, which takes us back to Item 6B on the agenda, Alvinist Glen Detention Center. Entertain a motion.
Second.
Moved to properly second. Any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Executive Session.
I need a quorum, come on. I need a quorum.
We don't run everybody off.
Can most come out and take a seat, Mr. Tia?
Second.
Moved to properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote. Please.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Mike Ryan?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tereshia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
As the record reflect, we're going to executive session with respect to item 6B, Alvinas Glen Detention Center pursuant to South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70, subsection A2, we received information and legal counsel and no action was taken. Next item on the agenda is item 19, motion period, there are no motions. Next item's item 20, adjournment. Next item's item twenty adjournment.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Been moved to properly second, that's non-debatable, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tereshia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron? Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
We are adjourned.